Good evening. I'd like to call the August 20th, 2015 regular board meeting for Forsyth County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here. As you can see, I'll be pitch hitting for our Chair, Darla Light. She's not here tonight. And usually we have a very full house, but herself and Ms. Roach cannot be here. They're attending to some important family matters, so we wish them well. Dr. Bearden, would you like to lead us in the invocation of hutch?
Sure. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before us, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom and a second by Ann. All in favor? Pass unanimously. We have a consent agenda. I assume everybody's had time to read through that. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom, a second by Ann. All in favor? It passes unanimously. Do we have any public participation this evening?
Uh, no.
We'll move on to presentation and discussion items, starting off with the finance report with Mr. Rick Gunn.
As you can tell, I'm not Dan Jones. He's actually taking a much deserved vacation this week. So tonight, I'll be presenting the financial statements on his behalf. The first financial statement is the statement of receipts and disbursements for the month of July. You see, our beginning cash balance was thirty-eight million, thirty-seven thousand. Receipts for the month, seventeen million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. And our disbursements were twenty-nine million, one hundred and twenty thousand. So you can see, our cash balance went down significantly to twenty-six million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. The next item I was going to discuss was the June 30th budget comparison. If you remember, our original budget, we started with three hundred and nine million, which is in the left-hand column. We had originally budgeted for a $9.6 million drawdown, which would have left forty-three million on July 2014 beginning. And we actually, if you look at the next column, the revised budget, we actually only took down four point one four seven million. We went back and revised for the T A B T revenues that we did not have at the beginning of the original budget, which brought our fund balance at June 30th estimated down to thirty-nine million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then the next column, the year-to-date actual, you see, we actually are going to be around thirty-six point six million because we had to transfer three and a half million to debt service, the cash flow issue in July. Now, in October, when we start getting our tax money in, we'll transfer that money back. But this is a picture of where we actually will be. So initially, we started off looking at being thirty-three million point seven for our fund balance, and we're going to be around thirty-six point six. So.
That's good.
And the next slide is the budget comparison for July of this year. Not a lot to say on revenues because it hasn't started coming in yet, other than QBE. Expenditures are riding in line at nine point eight-two percent for the month. So not really a lot going on yet as far as the revenue picture goes. You can see, our biggest for the month is, what's the QBE, fourteen point three million? We have a list of checks for the month. Check disbursements was three hundred and forty-four checks at seventeen point four million. We have the school reports for the month of May, June, and July with all the schools reporting. Have our debt service schedule for July. We had ten point seven million in expenditures for bond payments, and we transferred three point three million from SPOSS to cover three point three million of those payments. SPOSS four, we took in two million nine hundred and thirty thousand for the month of July, which isn't really, hasn't really changed a lot from the previous months. It's just a $7,000 increase. And Dan likes to have a graph in here so you can see the picture of it. Basically, you can see, not really much of a change. It's definitely trending up. And if you look back to January of '13, you can see where it's at there, right around two and a half million. So we're pushing almost three million a month now, which is good.
Great, if we could keep it going that way.
If we could keep it going, right. Then we have the various bond accounts with their activity, the interest that they would have earned, and that's pretty much it. Are there any questions of any of the financials I just presented?
No, just thinking it'd be interesting with the SPOSS, though, if we compared the gradual increase over time, over the years, to our growth in population, and see if it was directly proportional to the increase in the number of, you would think it would be, but it'd be interesting to see. I'm not asking you to do that, but curious.
Yeah, that's a valid one. Any questions?
Thank you, Rick.
One second. I would like to welcome Ryan Kranick. I believe he's with Boy Scout Troops 207. He's working on a citizen and community badge, his merit badge. Always happy to see our students here and learning more about how the government works. So if you have any questions when the meeting's over, if you want to contact us, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. And now we will go on to the human services update for 2013. Dr. Salone.
I wanted to give you a quick update this evening about your staff. We have a retention rate of ninety-three point seven percent of our teachers. To give you a little perspective about that, in 2012, it was ninety-five point seven. And you see, we're down a little bit. But if you remember, the recession hit us. Nobody moved. Everybody stayed. And now, economy's picking up and people are moving around. So I don't think it's anything that has happened badly, just that life has changed these days.
It's still a great rate.
It is. Wanted to let you know about our new staff this year. The total number of new hires yesterday in our department were four hundred and seventy-nine. Three hundred and forty-seven are certified staff, a hundred and twenty-nine are newly-funded positions because of growth. And our first-year teachers, the ones that are starting their career with us, are a hundred and eleven of them. So about a third of our new staff. A hundred and two are former Forsyth County teachers, paraprofessionals, or substitutes. So we're growing our own, which is a very nice thing. Seventy-four are from Fulton and Gwinnett. Now, that's a good thing, but we've also lost a few to Fulton and Gwinnett, too. Thirty-two are from other Georgia districts, and thirty-one are from other, sixteen other states. That's not everybody, literally, but that's mostly where everybody's come from. In elementary, we've hired a hundred and thirty-seven. Middle and High, on your content areas, science, fifteen, English, language arts, twenty-three, math, twenty-seven. And so you'll know, math has been a difficult thing for us, but we do think we finally got that under control. It's hard to find math teachers. Social studies, twenty-two, CTAE, thirteen and a half, health and PE, nineteen. Throughout the system, we've hired fifty new special ed teachers, six speech and language, and that's another field that's hard for us to find. Special ed facilitators, one, a vision impaired, one, and we are actually looking for another one of those now. World language, ten, seven music, seven art, fourteen counselors, two psychologists, and two ITS. In your district office and administration, there are four new people principals. Those are replacing positions, not, they're new people, not new positions. There are fifteen assistant principals. Thirteen are replacements, two new. Three directors, two are replacements, one new. And then one new assistant director in special ed. Your staffing, you've got, this is a comparison of last year to this year. We've got three thousand fifty-five certified, classified, a little over fifteen hundred. Total active employees are four thousand six hundred and twenty-three. If you add the substitutes to that, we have a total active payroll at times of six thousand two hundred and four people. The student-staff ratio, on this, this is certified staff. This is everybody. This is not pupil-teacher ratio. So staff to students. And if you'll see in '08, '09, twelve point three, we've grown almost twelve thousand students between '09 and '15, sixteen, and only two percent growth in staff ratio. So we're using our money wisely and our people wisely. Substitutes, total, we have purged our list. We have now fifteen hundred and eighty-one on our substitute teacher, but that is certified and classified. That's all our substitutes. Food service, bus drivers, everybody. Eight hundred and forty of them are teachers. Of those, three hundred and twenty-six are certified, and then of highly qualified, two hundred and forty. Our highly qualified now are important for us for long-term, because if you're, you know, like, we have the Family Medical Leave Act, leave application, if somebody has to be in there for ten days, they have to be highly qualified. So we have two hundred and forty of those. Salaries, just wanted to say thank you again for step increase, two percent pay raise. And we have increased our subpay to eighty-five dollars. And I wanted to let you know that around us, Cobb has an eighty-dollar subrate, Fulton a hundred, Gwinnett eighty-five, and Hope County sixty-seven. So we believe our eighty-five dollars is going to, raise is going to help us there. So we wanted to tell you thank you for that. Have you got any questions?
I guess it looks like we're still on top, if not top, if we are with over six thousand, would we not still be at that?
With our largest employer in the county.
We all did yeoman's jobs, sending, getting them off the uptake.
We've got some good new people.
Thank you. All right. Next on our discussion item is the Forsyth County Education Foundation Discussion. That is Hannah Orr.
All right. Tonight, we will be going over briefly some guidelines and specifics from the resolution that you all approved in July for the Forsyth County Education Foundation. And we'll just briefly be going over the selection process for each of you when you appoint a member of the governing committee, as well as some of the goals for this year, for 2015, 2016. So, and then at the end, we'll have some time for some questions and recommendations. All right. And you have this in front of you, so we'll just briefly kind of go over it. To begin with, each of you will be appointing one member to be a, to be on this governing committee for the Forsyth County Education Foundation. And if possible, we would ask that they be a member in your district. But if not, at least be a Forsyth County resident. Also have a strong personal history of school and community involvement. Be a key decision-maker with a business that has a long-term investment in improving public education. And also that they make this a very big priority, and that they are able to attend all meetings and advocate for our students and staff. The other area that we are discussing tonight is the goals for this committee for this year. And this was also included in the resolution, and the, one of the main focuses for this year will be to establish a three-year plan for the foundation and making sure that it aligns with our vision, mission, belief, strategic plan, and LONO profile. And we also will be creating bylaws and policies, procedures, and then including in that the grant cycle timeline and applications for those grants. And we also will be approving the communications plan, including logo and promotional items. And then also establishing fundraising goals and a fund growth plan, so really focusing on how those funds will be coming in. We also will be including committee minutes in the board meeting points of information each month. And in May of 2016, we will be having an end-of-year report to the Board of Education. And so with this, with the governing committee appointees, we are asking that each of you send your name and contact information for your person by September 4th. And then at that time, once we receive the information, we will be setting up our first meeting. And our goal for this year will be to have a minimum of four face-to-face meetings. And then from that, we do expect a lot of work, otherwise, you know, with Google Docs and webinar phone conferences, things like that, to establish those goals. Are there any questions or recommendations?
I just think this is a lot clearer, and it has helped tremendously, to be able to break this down, so that when we're asking people, we'll know what they're, we're asking them to do specifically. So that's positive. And I feel like there are some very strong business partners that we've had for years that would probably be very glad to serve in this capacity and support what we're trying to do, especially in terms of our career academies. And it's also, I think, important that we emphasize that the beginning of this will be to strengthen and support the work of our teachers and what they do, that those are the type grants that we will be looking at as the first step. I would think that, I mean, that's what we've talked about, that this will be a very good tie-in about that. I think logistically, it's a little bit hard in talking about the specific individuals because I think it's important that we do represent the whole county, and if possible, get someone within the district. In case of some of the larger corporations, that might be a little bit more difficult. So in trying to figure out how to do this logistically, so that we are not picking the same people, it might be beneficial if we had a couple of board members that would point people, that we could turn names into maybe a couple of names, and then make sure that we're all balanced in, as far as the county concerned. And maybe even business-wise, if you've got someone in banking, then you certainly don't want two people in banking, so that we can have a good cross-section. And if that's agreeable with everybody and stuff, maybe Darla and me, or somebody, I don't care, but just have somebody that we can, before we go out, and approach these people personally.
I think if we just, if we have the deadline of the fourth, we could maybe have those names into Jennifer the week ahead, and say, here's what I'm thinking about. And she could say, oh, yeah, we got a banking, we got a engineering. I think that would be sufficient. I don't think we need to overthink it. A lot of people, I'm thinking about, but I haven't figured out who, so I think that would be fine, just send our names in and keep it simple. I think this is a great, this is forming and coming together. I was speaking to a builder who's building a large development down in the south end of the county, coming out of the ground, and they're up and running, and was talking about how excited about the new schools. And I said, well, geez, you know, we'd be happy to get involved and do something for the schools. And someone was, man, in fact, we have this great foundation, so I'm going to hook you up with him. He was offering to, he's like, I don't need computers, or do you need money? And I said, I will hook you up with Ms. Orr, and she'll be happy to talk to you, so.
Wonderful. And any recommendations, feel free to send those to us, and we can certainly look at those.
Follow-up on some.
All right.
Thank you. Exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Next up, we have action items. The first thing, the district crisis plan update with Mr. Todd Shirley.
Really, for the emergency preparedness plan, we just, we went through that again this year, and it should usually be updated about once every two years. And all the updates are tonight are just editing updates. And I'm just going to run through a few of those real quick for you. For example, on page one, we had to change some of the wording, recent years, added that from the 1990s, and it was just, made more sense. Page nineteen on the plan, if you, we had to take out the statement about PTZs, which are pantill zooms. And because the new cameras, and we're thinking a little bit ahead of that one, but the new cameras that we're looking at will not have PTZ capability. They're all just zooms, zoom cameras and stationary cameras. So we made a little change there, so that it would reflect what we're looking, putting in. Page twenty-six is a very simple editing change, simple editing change on that. Page thirty-one, page thirty-one is a little bit, probably a little bit more complicated. We would move the operations center in case of a disaster from the central office, drive labs one and two, to the Hill Safety Office. The reason being is we have enough computer capabilities in the Bailey Building to access everything that we need to without having to move our complete operations over here. All of our school resource officers know our office. We have a lot of safety things in our offices as well, and we will tap into all the cameras in the district right out of our office, so we can utilize that as kind of a center with the Bailey, the Bailey Building or the Technology Building being our backup for computer Page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, on down the line. We made a change probably two years ago, or a year and a half ago, taking the roads code blue out of our lockdown. We received some information from the 911 center that schools would call in and say that we have a code blue, and that isn't aligned to a 911 center. Code blue is cardiac risk. So we took that out, and we changed it to a medical lockdown. So we need to change the terminology in our plan to medical lockdown instead of code Page sixty-two, again, is relating to our lockdowns. In an attempt to simplify and with quite a bit of research, we eliminated yellow cards and green cards from teachers' responsibility during lockdown. So we need to eliminate the green and the yellow cards in the crisis plan as well, and so that it does not reflect that we would use a green and a yellow card in case first responders are in the building. The only card color that we're going to use in that building is going to be a red card, and that's to signify that there is an emergency in the room and someone needs help at that point in that room. Makes it a lot simpler and easier for teachers. They're not worried about multiple colors, and we don't have to station those things in the rooms. And then finally, page one-eleven and one-twelve, again, medical lockdown, no more code blue. So we just took out the code blue from there. There are a few other little, small editing things that we noticed as we went through there. All of the, all of the charts that you see, the checklist, those are RGMA checklists, so we don't make, we don't edit those ever. We leave those until we receive something from FEMA or RGM that updates those, and then we make updates on those.
So I had one question. The EOC is usually a part of emergencies. Would we ever escalate something to the level we'd have to work from the EOC, or would we do operation center here and then connect to the EOC?
That may be an EOC call. That may be, that may be a call that they would have to make. We would try to operate our end of it out of our operational.
Because of our capabilities.
Because of our capabilities. But they're going to be operating out of their facility as well. The good thing about that is that we are in direct communication with Chris and all of the first responders up there. So we could relocate to that area as well. It's really going to be a call on the fly. It's almost, a lot of our schools are always concerned about where they're going to evacuate to in case of an emergency. It's hard for us to tell them that. You know, it depends on the magnitude of the emergency. We really do never want to pull off campus unless we have to, because parents are familiar with that, kids are familiar with that. So we just tell, we tell all of our administrators, we're the ones that'll make that call, and we'll let you know, and then, and then we'll respond accordingly there. And we would do the same thing with communication to Chris.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
That I recommend approval as the district crisis plan.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Ann. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thanks, Todd.
All right. West Forsyth High School additions and renovations project, architect contract approval with Mr. Bill McKnight.
He has recommended that the board appoint the architectural services contract for BRPH Inc. The architectural services fixed price contract for BRPH Inc. is intended for the design and engineering services for West Forsyth High School addition and modifications project. We estimate the additions and modifications to be four million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, with architectural and engineering fees of two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. For those of you who aren't aware, BRPH was the original design firm for West Forsyth High School.
That makes sense.
Any questions?
I'd recommend approval.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Ann. All in favor? It's unanimous. Naming of the specialty school with Dr. Valerie Low.
All right. We provided you an update last week where we are with the charter school that we're working on around workforce development. As part of that process, the recommendation is that we move forward with your support for naming the school and the facility, so that we can incorporate our nonprofit through the state of Georgia and start working through that process. So as evidence, the community meetings that we've had around this, we are, the word innovation kept coming up as we were meeting, in terms of what we were trying to do and the programs we were trying to put in place in the facility. So then we put our partnerships on top of that, the local support that we generated from the city of Coming and Forsyth County, and the chamber, all the partners that are coming on board to support this. So the word alliance kept coming up with that particular description of what we were trying to do. So we have recommended to move forward. The committee has the Alliance Academy for Innovation of Coming and Forsyth County. And we tried to break that down to show where we got that name. Certainly, the alliance with the partnership of the post-secondary folks, as well as our county and local governments, as well as our chamber and business and industry nonprofits, et cetera. The academy portion fits into our normal, non-traditional academy structure that we have here within the school system. Certainly, the innovation of the facility and the programs that we're going to be offering at the specialty school and the geographic location, including Coming and Forsyth County. So that just shows a little bit about who the partners are and where everybody fits into that. So we are going to recommend, hopefully, your support tonight to name the facility so that we can move forward on our nonprofit.
It's kind of a long name. I think what people will do is refer to it maybe as the Alliance Academy, the academy. I mean, who knows how that will take off? But, you know, as we had this conversation, as Valerie pointed out, we really thought, although the title is quite long, it truly does reflect what we're trying to do. And it recognizes the different partnerships we have in our community. This truly is an alliance, as we're putting this together. So, you know, a lot of them have a long ti, I mean, a lot of our schools are named after people, but they call them by the last name, like the George Woodlow School, people call it Woodlow Elementary. So I'm sure this will be shortened somewhere, but it does reflect what we're trying to do with this particular school. And so with that, I would recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second. I'm just glad it's not an acronym.
Yes.
There's no B, no Creek, no Bs, Brookwood, or anyone.
That's true.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Valerie. And that enables us to move forward and complete that grant application to the state and hopefully get that approved.
I didn't realize. I guess I hadn't thought it through, that a charter school has to form its own 501(c)(3).
It does.
But it still falls under the, under the Board of Education and under you and things like that.
Right.
Though it's a separate entity.
Right.
Okay. So we're down to points of information. Dr. Bearden, is anything you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, just one, you know, I know everybody's paying attention to enrollment. We started the school year, day one, with forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten students. We're now up to forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. So we've, we've added three hundred and twenty-eight students since the beginning of the school year. That's not a surprise. We fully expected that was going to happen. And our best guess is we'll probably be around five hundred additional students by Labor Day. And then it will typically kind of stabilize from that point forward. It's really interesting, and Mr. Amerson is in the audience tonight, I'll recognize this. His projection was that we would have forty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three students, and we actually have forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. So he is off by five. So we'll give him a little bit of, a little bit of wiggle room on that. But that, that's amazing to me that he could be that close projecting this out over time. And as you look back at his projections over the years, he's been spot-on. So just kudos to you and the great work that you're doing. But, you know, that's so important as we plan for each school year, that we know the number of students we expect to have. And to be within five, ten days into the, this school year is quite remarkable.
Very good.
I do also want to say, we have thirty-eight more appointments for new students over the rest of this weekend, next week. And we are, we're down to only fifteen incomplete registrations right now. So Mike Evans and his staff, again, have done a tremendous job of working that process and making sure students are enrolled and we have the information we need to get them into our schools. So that's basically what I wanted to report on.
Mr. Amerson, did you have any zoning impacts for us, or there wasn't?
Uh, this, nothing.
All right. Well, good. All right, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Some personnel.
Just for personnel tonight, correct?
Just personnel.
Just personnel?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Ann and a second by Tom. All in favor? Thank you very much. That concludes the business. That concludes the business proportion of our meeting.